Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 4th, 2017 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this statement stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Germain.
Here.
Alderman Fortunati.
Here.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Giannatassio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilli.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. Fifteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a, do have a quorum. Next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Alderman. Time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals, in order to allow everyone a chance to speak, and ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and invited guests. My name is Bill Bevan, 23, Merlin Circle in Milford. I'm here just to talk about the new patio that is on your agenda. For some of you that have seen this or have not seen this, to bring you a little up-to-date, the owner of the Bistro Basque, David, has gone out of his way to do what this Board wanted him to do last month, was to consolidate the size. He's brought it in at some areas, probably close to eight or nine feet, less than what he originally asked for. On the other side of this, when this item actually gets built, it's going to be a spectacular little thing. David does not do anything halfway. It will be something that downtown will be proud to see. My concern, what had always been from the beginning, when they first put in Eli's patio, was where the patios were going to go throughout the city. At least two, three, four years ago, I had mentioned that with Eli's, it would be part one of three. And when I mentioned where David's patio was going to go, a lot of this Board said that will never happen. But part two is actually here. Now, part three of what I explained to everyone years ago, and then up to last month, is that the possibilities of leasing on the green for other commercial businesses. So, even though I'm not in favor of all the patios in this one spot, I can see that this patio will fit in just like Eli's, which looks like it's been there since day one. I wish everyone that has a business there, good luck with their patios. But this Board also is the ordinance committee, and I would really appreciate if someone on the ordinance committee would look into actually an ordinance of not leasing for commercial full-time businesses on the green, like I've been told and I've seen that it just might happen. Not this year, not next year, but down the road. But an ordinance on commercial business on the green would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman held on November 9th, 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that in the meeting minutes for the public hearing, my name was omitted from being in attendance. If that could please be added.
So noted. Alderman Grant. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Four.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the special organizational meeting held November 21st, 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Giannatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just for a point of clarification, on the ordinance committee, I was elected vice chairman, and based on the standing committees, it doesn't represent that, so I would just like to make that point, that the standing committees reflect the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Giannatassio. So noted. Yeah. You are on the list, Alderman Giannatassio. The list that was handed out by the secretary?
Yeah.
None of them?
Yeah.
Just this here?
Take a look.
Yeah, she's talking about the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Open up the number five on the agenda, Chairman's Report. I just want to welcome all the new members, the Board of Alderman members we have here. Welcome all, welcome everyone, to the new year of all newly elected officials. And also, I want to wish all the members of the Board, and as well as the residents of the City of Milford, a very happiest of holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa. That's all I have for you tonight. Move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, happy holidays. Hope everybody had a terrific Thanksgiving.
No, no.
I would direct your attention, for informational purposes, to Item 6A. Kudos to our finance department for, again, the City of Milford was reaffirmed our AAA bond rating. Fitch has once again given us the AAA stamp of approval for our sound fiscal management and our prudent planning practices. So congratulations to Peter and everybody in our finance department. What came up in public comment tonight had to do with protecting Milford's historic green, the second-longest green in New England. For informational purposes, our open space committee and our Milford Preservation Trust have been working on a joint project to try to get the Milford Green on the National Registry, which would give it some historic protections. So that is still to come. It's a long, arduous process that takes a lot of work, and they are chipping away at it, but it is a joint project between those two local organizations. Once there is some more information, I will pass it along to you, but that should protect the greenness of our green for many years to come. Other than that, I direct your attention to our Agenda Items 8A and 8B. I respectfully request your consideration and action on those. If you have any questions, happy to answer. And welcome to all the new Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda, Item Number Seven, Unfinished Business. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would request to remove from the table, Item 8E on our
Motion was made to remove off the agenda, Item 8E?
From the table.
From the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think most of us here have reviewed the proposed deck over for, over near, well, for the, what's the name of the, the Bastro, Bistro Basque? And it looks, it looks very appropriate. It kind of matches.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we, yeah, I was just going to let him finish. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think it's, I think it's off the table, ready for discussion, but for informational purposes, you may want to read the entirety of the motion, 8E, just so everybody knows what the discussion is about.
Yeah, just going to do that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Vitale.
8E is the Board of Alderman, approval is requested pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute for the attached lease between the City of Milford and Paul Louise LLC DBA Bistro Basque for an outdoor deck/patio, fencing and replacement of outdoor tables and chairs, and to authorize the mayor and the city attorney to take all steps necessary, including, but not limited, to assigning, to signing documents and to effectuate said
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, as we had asked the, Dave, what's, Mr. Fernandez, we had asked him to, to please give us a better visual of what this deck would look like, and also draw to the scale so that we could actually see it, where we had problems with it last month. He's done that. This deck, it looks very appropriate. It looks very fitting. We've had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Fernandez, and I feel that this would make a nice add-on to that area and still leave us some open space. This deck that he's proposing over there would work in harmony with the other two decks, would have similar railings as the other two decks, and it looks like it would be quite fitting over there. So I would like to enter this Schedule B, which is a picture of the area drawn out, and also the architectural drawings with the, with the, with a map showing all of the different feet and inches of the deck. So if I could, if I could present this to the city clerk and the chairman of the Board of Alderman, I would like to make the motion, well, I won't make a motion yet, but I would like to enter this, so that we would propose this, but let's have further.
There's already a motion?
Yeah. Okay. Well, there's a motion on the table already, but I think this is appropriate, and I would, we would ask that it be built according to what I've just handed in. Thank you.
Through you. Can we get Mr. Fernandez up to answer a couple of questions on the drawing, please? What am I talking, Spanish? I don't know, nobody's underst, what's going on tonight?
Evening, Mr. Fernandez. How are you?
Good evening.
I just appreciate your idea of getting, getting it scaled down a little bit. I just have a couple of questions. On the tree, which is closest to your back coming out, do you intend to raise the canopy of that particular tree? And is there room, like, around that tree for high-tops or whatever? Or will there be room for high-tops around that tree?
Potentially, yes. I'm not sure the, how many steps I'm going to have to put to bring the level of my existing patio to that deck. So it may, it may be, it may be enough to turn before, between the tree and the wall, or I may have to go kind of around the tree. I'm not so sure.
You do intend to raise the canopy? Trim that tree?
Yes, the lower branch, yes.
Thank you. Thank you to make the adjustments, and thank you for the rendition. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mr. Fernandez. Appreciate you doing all the work here. That makes it much more clear. I see you scaled, scaled back a little bit, saving some more green space. I would be open to wrapping it slightly around the other tree as well, just to throw it out there, but as it is, I think you've done a fine job explaining, you know, clearly what you want, and I'm sure it'll come out nice either way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Giannatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening, Mr. Fernandez. I'm truly excited about this patio, because I know that you have an eye for design, and I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, the end result. And I'm also happy that you're using wood on the deck, because I feel like there's a lot of concrete there, and the wood is going to be key. It's going to soften it up, and it's going to make the whole area very, more interesting. My question is, and I'm not holding you to this, but in, on our agenda, it says outdoor tables and chairs, but it doesn't reference how many tables or chairs. So I just want to ask you first, approximately, how many tables do you think you can fit on this deck?
I think it's going to be somewhere between 10 and 15 tables, depending on the size of the table. There is a lot of angles, so it's, it's sometimes you can only put a table of two, not a table of four, simply because of the fact that it's coming back in, coming back in. So I would say about between 10 and 15 tables. I personally like to use tables of twos and put them together to make a four. It allows more flexibility. So that's close, I can tell you.
Okay.
I'm not trying to, it's not going to fit 100 people, for sure.
Right. No.
It's not the point, basically.
I understand. I just wanted to get an idea. And my last question is, Mr. Fernandez, is the cinder block facade that's on the building, on the exterior, which is behind the existing?
Yes.
Bushes, do you plan on doing anything with that?
At some point, yes, I do. I would like to finish the facade of the building in a way that is consistent with the front, basically, in terms of material, in terms of look and enhancement. Yes.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Hardiman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Fernandez, do you own another restaurant in that area, too?
I'm sorry?
Do you have another restaurant?
Yes, yes.
Are they going to be sharing that deck?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I just need to know.
I'm not sure exactly, I was explaining the last time, in terms of the menu, and in terms, one place is open for lunch and dinner, when the other one is not. So it's probably going to have that combined menu for lunch, for example, yes. You're welcome.
Alderman Beatty, did you have your hand up?
Thank you.
Oh. Alrighty, then. Any more questions for Mr., yeah, Alderman Grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mr. Fernandez. I appreciate all the changes that you made to the dimensions. I think it came out excellent, and I'm looking forward to the finished product. I had asked last month about any type of music, and you let us know that there wouldn't be music being played on the patio. I'd just like to ask if any of that has changed.
No, no, no. It has not changed. I don't have, I don't have that plan.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item Number Eight, 8A, Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached master municipal agreement for the right-of-way projects, and to authorize the mayor and public works director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Giannatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I believe last time we did this was the first time that we had this agreement in place to effectuate and to make things more efficient. Is that, is that correct? That's what I recall.
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Giannatassio. A very, very similar document came before your Board a couple months ago. That was a master agreement that had to do with utilities in the public right-of-way. This has to do with the state doing work in the public right-of-way. The previous one had any, had to do with any type of utilities, city utilities, that were affected because of state work. For example, if the state was digging up a road, and they had to move a city sewer or other city utility, they would have to replace it in-kind, repair it, restore it to the condition it was in previous or better, or they would have to give the city the funding in order for us to do it in-house. This is almost an identical agreement. It is, anytime that the state digs up a city right-of-way, a road, because they're doing some other type of state work that affects it, they have to repair or replace, or give the city the funding in order to do that. You're right in the fact that this makes it more efficient. This is a master agreement that applies to all state projects. Previously, for every single state project, we had to have this long, cumbersome agreement attached as an addendum to all of those agreements that we had with the State of Connecticut. So this is something that we had to repeat for each project that the state entered into. This makes one master agreement for all 169 towns, for every single project that the state DOT engages in. So it's cleaner, and more efficient, and more consistent.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. So the agreement comes from the state, and how long does the agreement last in its entirety? In other words, when will, when will we, when will this be back before us for another renewal?
I will defer to the city attorney, but my reading is that it does not expire until another agreement is substituted, that it goes into effect upon signature, upon execution. You have to give my office the authority in order to do that, and then it is live after that, until it's substituted by another master agreement or another agreement of some form. But I'll defer to the city attorney.
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Giannatassio. It's a 10-year term upon execution.
Thank you, city attorney. Mr. City Attorney.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the acceptance of a small harbor improvements project program grant from the State of Connecticut for dock repairs slash replacement at Listman's Landing, and to authorize the mayor, finance director, and harbor operations director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said project.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to the mayor. Mayor Blake, could you tell us what the amount of the grant is, and give us an overview of the repairs that are anticipated to be performed?
Sure. Through you, Alderman Sutton. The grant amount that has recently been approved by the State Bond Commission is $398,000, of which the city has to match either through in-kind or through direct charges, $75,000, for a total project cost of $473,260. The project scope includes redecking all of the docks, which are about 20 years old. This is something that we would have, would have had to done in the general course of maintenance. We do have our harbor master, members of our harbor commission, and our harbor marina director here, as well as Julie Nash. The only recommendation that I would have to your Board is that in the body of the resolution, that you amend it to also include Julie Nash, our community development director, as one of the signatories, because she is the official administrator of the grant with the state. So if, at the bottom, you can add through an amendment, the mayor, finance director, harbor operations director, and community development director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said project. If you could add community development director into that resolution, I would recommend that. But if you do have questions that are more detailed about the scope of the grant, we do have members of our harbor here to answer those questions.
Alderman Giannatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to the harbor master. My question is, the scope of the grant, is it specific to replacing or repairing the docks? Or could, have it been used in other areas? Or does it need to be specific to, to what you're requesting?
Good evening. The project is primarily redecking the marina, redecking the floats across the way, and the floats in the harbor. There are 65 floats in the mooring field. But it also includes repairs to the electrical system in the marina, in the plumbing. During the course of replacing the decking, just the fact that we have to, to remove that, which is quite, quite a job, we anticipate some, some work to be done on the electrical system while the decking is off.
So, small harbor improvements, so it's basically at your discretion, as far as what the need is?
I don't have the exact wording of the, of the grant proposal, but you can jump in there?
Sure. Well, the grant, we, these are the projects we took, chose two projects. This, the Listman Landing Marina redecking, and a bridge removal at Gulf Street. That was not chosen to be funded. This was, so we're moving forward with this. But yes, this grant, we could have put in several different projects.
And Ms. Nash, you actually applied for this grant? This came through your department?
I wrote it with the harbor commission. We did it together.
Okay. Thank you.
It was a great grant to work on, actually.
Okay.
Alderman Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Julie and Rick. Congratulations on this grant. It is a very significant grant. I know that the late Bob Post, who was a friend in, friend to many of us, all of us, and chair, longtime chairman- and chair, longtime chairman of the board of the Harbor Management Commission, worked on this as well, along with Bill Myers, who was here in Public Works. It is a significant grant and it comes at a time where, you know, the state, quite frankly, is cutting back and even with certain expenditures, holding back on payments. And I wondered what the economic benefits might be that go beyond the scope of the grant itself, what, because whenever we're talking about economic development, we're certainly talking about the spin-off effect. What is it that you hope through your department, Ms. Nash, or through the Harbor Management Commission, to see the effect from this grant?
I think, Julia just mentioned that we had submitted two different projects. Yes. I'm sorry. It was just noted that we had submitted proposals for two different projects. One was the removal of the Gulf Street Bridge and the second was the redecking of the marina. And the word I got back from the state was that the removal of the Gulf Street Bridge was denied or wasn't approved because there was no economic effect that would, would benefit the city or benefit our residents. But the decking was approved based on the, you know, the economic benefit we would receive from it. And that, I believe, is based on the fact that our marina, being a transient-only marina, the people who, who are our customers are daily or by the hour. And our goal has always been to help downtown, the restaurants, the shops. All our customers come in and spend time downtown, all of them, the vast majority of them. So, our goal is always to help downtown and by redecking a marina, which is 22 years old. And not that it's, it's structurally unsound, but aesthetically, because we've had to make repairs over the years between the mooring field and the main decking, it's starting to look like the black and white keys of a piano. New wood, old wood, which we've had to replace. So, anything we can do to maintain Listman Landing as pristine as possible, and opportunities like this don't come by too often. It's a high-maintenance area. It's just the, the environment down there, the salt air. We've done, and dredging, we've done two projects, which were each, since I've been there, which we paid for to the 200, a hundred, approximately $100,000 each time. We put approximately $100,000 into the mooring field last year and piling repairs over there. So, it is a high-maintenance area and, like I said, an opportunity like this to get this major project done with the help of the state is just, it's just amazing that it, that it fell into place, or I'm anticipating it falling into place. And then with, with, like you said, the add-ons, you know, I've got a punch list. We're gonna, we're gonna do the decks. I've got a punch list of repainting the, the maintenance building. I have the funds to get new patio furniture. It's all about, you know, maintaining the, the pristine environment down there. And we work hard at it. And again, this is just, just a really good opportunity.
Thanks for the information and congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you guys up there. I agree with you, it's a high-traffic area. It needs to be kept up. The inviting, being inviting to the boaters to come in and to do whatever needs to be done is extremely important. But help me understand, is it going to be pressure-treated wood, wood that's going to be put back on there? What kind of planking is going to be used so that we get longevity or more longevity out of this whole project?
The best thing I could, we anticipate using a Brazilian hardwood called IPE, spelled I-P-E. It's very dense. And the best thing I could say is, if you wanted to see a great example of, of the material itself, Milford Yacht Club resurfaced their decks, help me out, five, six years ago? Five years ago. And you can go down there and see what it looks like after five years. It's, it's just, it's smooth, it doesn't have a grain, you lose all that sliver potential. It's really sharp-looking and a lot of marinas are using that, as opposed to the synthetics.
I'm just glad that something else is being used, it's used because the, the idea of getting slivers in that pressure-treated material raises a lot of questions and it's a liability too, so I would imagine, but that's great to have a piece of hardwood there that will be not only aesthetically pleasing, but longer-lasting. So, thank you. Thank you for all the work you do to it, Donnie Ray.
Alderman Vecchirelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to amend. I would like to insert in the fourth sentence, after the word "finance director," and insert "community development director." So, that basically, this should read that authorize the mayor, the finance director, the community development director, and the harbor operations director to be inclusive of all those people to take the action. So, again, after the, in the fourth sentence, after the word "director," the first word "director," insert "community development director." Thank you.
We have an amendment to the motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes unanimously on the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Julie. Next item on the agenda is item number nine. There is no new business. Go on to the agenda, item number 10. There is no budget memo transfers. Agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds. Alderman Vecchirelli, agenda item 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $42,225.57.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports of standing committees. Is there any reports of any standing committees? Seeing none, open on your agenda, item number 13, reports of special committees. Any reports of any special committees? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, if I might invoke a point of personal privilege here in reporting as one of the liaisons from the library board, not the library board in general, but the Milford Public Library in particular, I just wanted to announce that during the month of December, my favorite artist, a local painter named Diane Smith, will be on display for the entire month of December. And I would encourage members of the public in this board, if they're going to the library during the month of December, to stop and take a look at some of the beautiful oil paintings that will be on display. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any other reports of special committees? Seeing none? The next item on the agenda is executive session. I want to entertain a motion to go into the executive session to discuss consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Milford and the Milford Police Union, LLC. Consideration 14B, consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Milford and Milford Police Dispatchers Union. Item 14C, consideration of settlement of Quorum Lane, LLC versus city of Milford regarding 130 Quorum Lane. Agenda item 14D, consideration of settlement of Crown Milford, LLC versus city of Milford regarding 470 Wheeler's Farms Road. Item 14E, consideration of settlement of CAP Associates versus city of Milford regarding 19 through 21 Shady Street, 10 Shady Street, 228 Roe Avenue, 70 Warfield Street, 270 Roe Avenue, 3 Jameson Street, and 0 Finch Street. Item 14F, consideration of settlement of 461 Post Road Properties, LLC versus city of Milford regarding 461 Bridgeport Avenue. Item 14G has been removed from the agenda. 14H, consideration of settlement of New England Finance Corporation versus city of Milford regarding 2038 Bridgeport Avenue. Item 14I has been removed from the agenda. Item 14J, consideration of settlement of Broad and High Street Associates versus city of Milford regarding 75 Broad Street. Item 14K, consideration of settlement of 69 Broad Street Associates, LLC versus city of Milford regarding 69 Broad Street. Item 14L, consideration of settlement of Lee Bircham versus city of Milford regarding 89 Broad Street. Joining us in executive session for items 14A through 14L will be the mayor, Ben Blake, and the assistant city attorney, Deborah Kelly. Joining us for 14A and 14B will be the police chief, Keith Mello, and HR director, Tanya Barnes. Joining us in executive session for 14, items 14A through 14H will be the city attorney, John Bircham. Joining us in executive session for items 14C through 14L will be the city assessor, Dan Thomas. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion, there's two just adjustments that you can let the record reflect. Under 14E, there was a Scrivner's error. It's 75 Warfield Street, not 70 Warfield Street. And also, if you can give consideration to our deputy police chief, Ken Ron, joining us in executive session as well for items 14A and 14B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion go to an executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session. Alderman Vecchirelli.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve consideration of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Milford and the Milford Police Union, LLC, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney as discussed in executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, 14B.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve consideration of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Milford and Milford Police Dispatchers Union, AFSCME, AFL-CIO Council for Local 1303-454, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Alderman Vecchirelli, 14C.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Quorum Lane, LLC versus city of Milford in regards to 130 Quorum Lane, in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14D.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Crown Milford, LLC versus city of Milford in regards to 470 Wheeler's Farms Road, in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14E.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of CAP Associates versus city of Milford in regards to 19-21 Shady Street, 10 Shady Street, 228 Roe Ave., 75 Warfield Street, 270 Roe Ave., 3 Jameson Street, and 0 Finch Street, in accordance with the recommendation of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14F.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of 461 Boston, Boston Post, I'm sorry, 461 Post Road Properties, LLC versus city of Milford in regards to 461 Bridgeport Avenue, in accordance with the recommendation of the city assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14G, I'm sorry, 14G has been removed, 14H.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of New England Finance Corp. versus city of Milford in regards to 2038 Bridgeport Ave., in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 14I has been removed from the agenda. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14J.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Broad and High Street Associates versus city of Milford in regards to 75 Broad Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, agenda item 14K.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to authorize settlement in the matter of 69 Broad Street Associates, LLC versus city of Milford regarding 69 Broad Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, item 14L.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Lee Bircham versus city of Milford regarding 89 Broad Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the assistant city attorney and the city assessor as discussed in executive session.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Enter the motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.